I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna have a moment of silence for what we remember 9/11. Dear God, bless all our actions and carry them on by thy gracious assistance so that every prayer and good work of ours may begin from thee and by thee, be happily ended through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you. Do the roll call.
Rob Snyder?
Present.
Joe Von Bass?
Here.
Tim Clark?
Here.
Tim Wagner?
Here.
Here.
Tom Snyder?
Here.
Steve Pastor?
Here.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the August 14th meeting minutes as written. Make that motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Announcements? We held a executive session tonight before this meeting. It was from 6 till 6:50. And at this point, we'll have public comments.
For personnel and litigation.
Well, okay, because of, yeah, personnel, and we'll get to that eventually here. Okay, thank you. Linda Martin?
Hello. My name is Linda Martin and I live at 508 North Street in McCherrystown. I'm new to the area. I've been here about two years. And I am a concerned citizen. I live next door to a house that has got, is known for drugs, is also known for throwing trash everywhere that it blows in everybody else's yard. It's nuisance with music, loudness, people parking where they shouldn't park, hitting your home, actually taking, I even had to have trespassers come through. So I put wooden horses up to keep them from hitting the sidewalk and hitting the house. Well, the girl hit the horses and put the horses into the house, cracking the siding on the house. And I just need to know what can be done. I mean, I have pictures of where they're parking. I have even went out, took my own money and bought signs to put up. No trespassing, no parking. And the wine guy keeps doing it. In fact, he gets so close, and I got pictures of it, that I don't know how he gets in and out of his vehicle. You come out in the morning and you see someone sitting on your front porch that's dazed, and you know what's wrong. And I don't want that on my property. I just don't want it in my, you know what I'm saying? And something's gotta be done.
Anybody have a comment other than, did you call the police about this?
I have called police on them numerous times, and they say they can't do nothing. Well, they can. I mean, someone's gonna get hurt. I have the gas tanks or pipes going in my house on the side that they're parking. They hit them, my house goes. And I've asked them nicely numerous times to move their vehicles. They have 24 cars parked. I have counted them. I have written down every tag number, every car they have parked there. And they're not local cars. There's Texas, there's Florida, there's Virginia. I don't know what needs to be done.
Are they 24 cars at one time?
Yes. That I literally had, my car has no transmission in it right now. So I took my car, which I can garage still, and put it out front of my house to keep them from parking. And now they have another vehicle come in there parking behind my car. It's street parking. I park in the back, my car's out front.
So where are these 24 cars parked? In the grass, in the yard?
No, they're parked on the street. They're parked by, I mean, I have counted eight cars beside my house. There is also like 10 to 15 of them parked in the back parking lot. And it's not fair. I mean, they turn their music up, they open their car doors, you ask them to turn it down, they just stand there and laugh at you thinking you're stupid.
I can say, I know the house you're talking about, and that's a police matter. It's a fine line there because you have to, it's not about what we like or whether we don't like them being there or whatever. It's the idea that are they breaking the law? That's what you gotta get, in other words. I know, you know...
But when you have drugs coming in, when you have drugs going out, you have pictures of drug dealing in front of your house. That's not a law, and that's breaking the law.
What would you wanna do, take pictures?
I do have pictures. I do have pictures. I have taken pictures. I've shown the law when I caught them. I mean, I had one guy not too long ago sit in front of my house, hung in, hung in, got his drugs, went back to his house, came back out, hand the guy money. And I watched this transpire. And then the guy gave him a pizza box that was upside down. Got it on my phone. You don't carry a pizza upside down, so we know what was in the box. I mean, it's, it's give and take, it really is. I mean, I feel that something's gotta be done, and I don't know what more can be done.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, it's what ordinances are being violated.
Parking and all, yeah.
Trespassing.
The police chief's not here.
Yeah.
What's the address of the house?
510.
She's 510. North Street?
North, yes. Right across from where you're at, Steve.
It's the brick house, is that?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah. We know, we're familiar with that property anyway.
That's the property, yes.
Gotcha.
Police have been there quite a bit over the years.
I mean, I even called the gas company and asked them to come out and put poles up. And the guy came out, told him he could, told him, when the gas company came out, told them, you can't, it's private property. Columbia Gas left without putting the poles up, took them down to my neighbor's house and put them up. So what do you do?
Thanks for bringing the complaint. We'll see what we can do for you. All right, next is Gina Demaria.
I think mine's kinda similar to that. I think we have a problem with police presence. I think we have a problem with police doing their job. And I really wanted to speak with Chief, you know, Chief Kits Miller because I had asked him about, you know, what the laws were as far as peacefully assembling. And he did not know that. I do have, and I have pictures. And I came to the police station many times, and I've showed him pictures. And you cannot, what I can tell you is the PA state law says you cannot congregate whether you're protesting or whether you're gathering and block roadways or sidewalks. You cannot do it. And in a lot of instances, that people are cited for disorderly conduct because they're blocking roads or sidewalks. I've shown pictures to Chief Kits Miller. There's, there's nothing that's happening. For instance, we just got approval to be in our house. And my option is, when there was an issue at the house and we called 911, no one showed up. No one showed up. Can you imagine in this day and age, we're calling 911, myself and another elderly man is there. I'm hearing the conversation with someone calling 911 and no one shows up. When I originally spoke with Chief Kits Miller, he said that it never came in. Before I called him, I called the state police and they said it absolutely came in. He then changed the story and said that it was a hangup. Well, you still didn't show up if it was a hangup? Because I know I heard him, I'm in the process of getting a transcript of that 911 call. But we have to have some police presence. I mean, I looked at the logs for an entire year and it's, usually they're getting about an average of four to five calls a day. And most of them aren't, you know, parking, barking dog, things like that. We have to have a police presence. I have to be able to call the police if something, because of things being so hostile, if something were to break out, we can't protect, I mean, I can't protect these guys. And then if something were to happen and they take, you know, the law into their own hands, then it's gonna be their problem. So we have to have a better police presence. We have to. I mean, I've, I've spoke to him, I've, you know, here's another, for instance. June, there was an incident that I emailed him and I have, I have documentation of that. I emailed him a second time on 8/2 of getting the police report number. I didn't want the police report, I just wanted the number. I've never received it. Now, you're talking since June. So, I mean, it's frustrating. And, and the issue is here is if we don't have some police protection in our new house, we're gonna hire our own. And not only is that gonna be costly, but that's really not gonna be good for the neighborhood to see. And we don't wanna do that. We wanna be quiet, do our thing, and be done. So I really wished he was here because I wanted to, you know, see if he looked into the fact about the police, you know, assembling.
Look into the matter. Thank you. Did you have a comment, Keith?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the question is also, do everybody on both sides know what the law is? I remember driving past and I, I never did get to see any of the pictures, but I thought, well, everyone should know if you're protesting or whatever, marching, whatever, it's against law. My only question was, were there people protesting? Were they on the property? And so that's the thing that, if that was the case, then that's the thing that should have been shown to the police. As far as being out in the street, I think that that's okay. But I was only questioning, does someone actually come on the property and does everybody know what the law requires when you do that? And so that was my, I think I did ask, but I never got to see the pictures.
Yeah, they were on the property and they did not have permission to be on the property. I have pictures, I printed the pictures out, I showed Chief Kits Miller, and never got a response. Never got a phone call back, nothing. I followed up on a couple of phone calls and, and like nothing was done. And it's, it's kind of frustrating because you wanna feel like something may get done if something were to happen. And so...
I believe since we had two complaints in the same evening here, it is most urgent that we call a meeting with the chief and get this police matter taken care of. This is nothing that we can push behind. We need to get it done immediately and take care of the situation. I mean, if we had one complaint, we take time to look into it. If we had two in one night, it's something that needs to be done immediately.
All right. Yep. Okay, Jen, or anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. Yep, okay. Jen Groves? Oh, okay, yeah, that happened before. No problem. Yeah, that's all right.
Now we all know you're here.
Now we all knew who you are.
Since he called your name out.
Yeah, there you go. Appreciate that. We love citizens coming out. Sean Miller?
Hi, I'm Sean Miller. I live at 509 Main Street. Most of you know me. I've been a resident for exactly 22 years. I bought the house and three days later had a son, so his birthday was August 1st. Yes, I was the one responsible for all the thunder on August 2nd because of the motorcycles. Abate came out and threw him a surprise birthday party and made him an honorary member. Police showed up, which they were asked, just in case we needed help getting out. Honestly, the way they came and checked, it was good. No complaints. However, nothing with the police met. The 510 North Street, that's why I'm standing here. I have a neighbor that is now a widow at 513 Main Street. I've adopted mowing her yard. It's not an issue. Half hour, 40 minutes, done. The amount of trash that I'm cleaning up from 510 is terrible. This evening, I took a picture of a drug straw, McDonald's straw that was cut. Not cool. The drugs that are coming in and out of there, it's quite obvious when the cars come in, park, you know, the upside down pizza box, and they, one car comes in, a bag is put in the window, person goes back inside, that car leaves, another car comes around, person comes out, takes it out of the window. I have pictures of that. One of the biggest things that I have an issue with, I don't know exactly how many years ago it was, might have been a year, it might have been two, but this town voted down someone who wanted to make basically what we call a flop house. I'm here to tell you, since that place has come in, that's exactly what this town has. There might be one or two people that are a resident. There are still 19 rooms, two community bathrooms with your four showers and your sinks and everything else. One of our police officers has witnessed it. He counted 18. I corrected him with 19. He goes, well, I was moving quickly. The problem with the parking, a lot of these cars, because everybody knows where I live, I have the classic cars. They come in at 11:30 at night when it's the change. I have yet to see someone stay more than three nights. They come in, they have out of state tags after 11:30. By 7:00 AM, they have Pennsylvania or Maryland tags on that car. This has, this is, what we voted down, what the town didn't want, we've got.
A boarding house?
That's what it seems like, yeah. Stay overnight, there's extra rooms there, it seems like that's what's going on.
It's a flop house. It is a flop house. And now we have not only the white vans dropping 12, 15 people off at 3:00, 3:00 PM, and then picking them up at 4:30. And the only reason I'm up at 4:30 is because my husband leaves for work. Otherwise, I wouldn't know about it.
So they're dropping them off at 3:00 AM?
They are picking them up, and then they bring them back at between 3:00 and 4:30. It used to be a white van without hubcaps. Now they're mixing up the vehicles. And the ones coming in, you know, we had an incident with the parking, as Linda had said. Gentleman came out and immediately started, no speak English. Two days later, when we nicely worked it out, that, look, we don't want you hitting the gas lot, the meter, because the pipes come right out of the house. If the meter is here, his truck is no less than two feet, or no more than two feet away. He did the fence posts that you hammer in for an electric fence. He did run over one. Now he parks somewhere else. Had that post been the gas meter, the whole block goes up, not just one house.
The only thing with this property is it's, should we talk about that? Has anybody ever reached out to this individual? Or, you know, the police, or anything said about that?
He only comes around once in a bluey nest, pick up the beer bottles and the beer cans that's in the garbage can. He does not speak to anybody.
The landlord?
Yeah. Is it just one? I was with the understanding there were a couple people that had an interest in that property.
Well, we'll look into it. That's all I can tell you. Yeah, this is pretty serious stuff.
And just for clarification, you said 513 is where all the trash is in the yard?
Yes.
But that, wouldn't that be across the street so that the trash?
Across the alley.
Oh, gotcha.
And Maple Street is behind us. So her property is basically right there. I have pictures of a area where it's all beer bottles and cans that, when they come home from work, they take everything out of their trunk of their car that they put in there during the day and just drop it right where it stays. And then the next day, they park somewhere else and do it there. The amount of trash that I've picked up, the straw, I will not pick up. I, I don't know what's there. Even if I had gloves, I wouldn't pick it up. I shouldn't have to pick it up. I'm actually a member of this community who's paying taxes. Not gonna complain about it because you're all members and you all pay it. But as a homeowner, right now, I can't sell and move. I don't wanna move. This is my family, these are my friends. I'm also judge of elections. I enjoy who I am now. I shouldn't have to change because something that we voted out prior to is now in full bloom. There is a way to, if they wanna do what they're doing, there's gotta be a way to do it. But there's gotta be boundaries for them like it is for me. And that's all I'm asking. I'm not saying they've gotta go or being racist. I'm just saying, come on. You're gonna be part of this community, you need to be invested also. And that's all I'm asking for.
This goes back to what, you were saying earlier. It's almost just like in Gina's case. You have to look at what is legal. Now, that's what we all have to look at. That's what we have to find out, in other words. What's legal? Not about I feel, or I think I see, or like zoning. What about parking? Are they legally parking? And those are the things we're gonna have to look at.
To that, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
When we visited this years back, a couple of years back, it was stated in a large meeting that they were to have eight parking spaces. When they came with the backhoe and dug out the backyard and took out all the sisters' things, they have 10 spaces, five on each side. And in the evenings, they pull them in perpendicular. Alongside the house, where the old alley used to come through, there's anywhere from three to five cars there.
Very good. You and I have actually stood in Washington, so...
Yeah, yeah.
The difference is, is they, four or five years ago, they, whoever wanted to buy the property came to council for zoning approval, and it was not approved. The people who bought this property about a year and eight months ago, nine months, they didn't come to council for approval. So they're just operating it however they want. Now, is it PCMA?
PMCA.
PMCA. Maybe we can get a follow-up from them.
So my first recommendation is that if there's any thing that you're questioning as a police matter, you need to call 911 or the non-emergency number. I can provide you the non-emergency number and report it. It needs to be reported or our officers don't know if it's a problem. So that goes for anything. It's not up to us to decide if it's illegal or anything. That's the police and they know.
Correct. But here's, here's the...
In official reports.
The reports are made, and I'm not saying, I'm not putting anybody down or saying, you know, police haven't done their job. I have a son that has shunt failure often. Police are always there when, you know, and quickly. My point is, there's a miscommunication when it comes from making the report. It just kinda goes dead. And I gotta live here 24/7. And like I said, I'm, I'd like to go on vacation and know that when I come home, my garage doors aren't busted in. Because tonight, what I saw coming in, I had the cars out. I own a 58 Belvedere, Christine, moving. That's my car. Christine Christine is what we call her. The group that came out to look and see, you know, they're looking in the garage like, what else is in there? Not that I'm accusing, but it does make me feel uneasy because no one else in the community does that. And, I'm sorry, he walks past my garage all the time and never looks in.
I don't let you see me look.
But in light of everything, understand, yes, we are calling the police. And we are, we're bringing it to your attention, not saying anybody's doing anything bad or anything wrong, but
It's a problem.
We got what we didn't, what we voted down. So if we can move forward, it would be appreciated.
Sure, thank you.
I think we should probably call a meeting with the mayor and the chief of police and move forward with this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on this. All right. That's, that's all for the public comment period. We'll go into the new business, first item. So we had a meeting earlier, we talked about, Personnel Committee had recommended that we hire Dave Williams in the position of Public Works Labor. He will work 7 to 3:30, Monday through Friday, at the rate of $32 an hour. He has prior municipal experience and will be a great asset to McCherrystown. I need a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, stand a second. Okay. Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. Motion carries. Want to stand up?
Introduce yourself to everybody.
There you are, yep. Just say a word. There you are.
I just wanna come meet you all night.
That was nice of you.
Congratulations.
Hopefully I do well for you all and help everybody out, get some of this trash off the street.
There you go. There you go. Look at that. You want a friend already. Thanks, Dave, yep. There you go. All right, the next item is approval for a purchase of a new lawnmower. We all received a copy of this. Hopefully everybody read it at this point. Just provide everyone with the mower flyer. So the Kabuta mower we currently have is not running and has a high number of miles or hours on it. So we're looking to upgrade to a mower with a larger deck for mowing in large field areas. So I need a motion to approve a payment of $9,841.33.
I'll make a motion.
All right, in a second. Yep. All in favor? Motion carries. The next... Yeah, yes, it is.
Toro commercial. 72-inch deck, 30... So keep it under 5.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of conflict waiver for sewer service agreement negotiations. So I need a motion to approve the conflict waiver provided by our solicitor to allow him to represent McCherrystown in upcoming negotiations with Hanover Borough.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, yep. All in favor? None opposed. Okay, motion carries on that. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is approval for the solicitors to draft and advertise ordinance adopting pollutant limits for wastewater discharge in the borough in the form provided by Hanover Borough. Everyone get a copy of this. Does anybody understand it? Luke's willing to say a few words about it if anybody's any questions.
Yeah, sure. So basically, McCherrystown discharges wastewater to the Hanover Borough system. And it seems like they recently got revised pretreatment program local limits that were approved by the EPA. And so those set specific local limits on the amount of certain chemicals that can be released with your wastewater. So they just need McCherrystown to codify into their ordinance that as a contributing municipality, you will also abide by those limits. And they're listed here on the ordinance. So they already gave us the form of the ordinance, we just need to adopt it.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so I need a motion to approve our solicitor to draft and advertise an ordinance adopting the pollutant limits for wastewater discharge in the borough in the form... adopting the pollutant limits of, for wastewater discharge in the borough in the form provided by Hanover Borough. Okay.
Make a motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries on that. Next item is the appointment of a chief administrative officer for the borough pension plans. Any questions on that? Why we need to do this? Everybody all right with that?
Yep.
Okay. So council needs to appoint a chief administrative officer to oversee the borough pension plans, so I need a motion to appoint Jessica Freer to chief administrative officer.
Make that motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for that. Next one is this approval for the MM, approval of the twenty-twenty-five MMOs. Anybody have any questions on that one? So I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five MMOs.
Make a motion.
Second.
You second?
Second.
Oh, I'll second.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving right on here. Okay, so approval of the expenditures, hopefully everybody got to look through those.
Yeah, we've got a new thermostat. Saw there was a new thermostat in that, in the expenditures.
Where was it?
The kind of Walmart.
Yeah. Did you change that?
We didn't put it in.
Oh, you didn't? Oh.
No, it, it's why I'm here.
Oh, I see. Trying to save. Okay, so.
Yeah, it's my fault. It is your fault, yep. That's what I did.
So I need a motion to approve the expenditures paid for August thirteenth until September ninth.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for that. Is there anything else that needs brought before we adjourn?
Switches.
Always like to do that at the end.
One more stop.
Yep. All right, I'll make a motion, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you for coming out, everybody.